I am Kimberly Melnick, School Board Chair, and this special meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, is hereby convened at 5:00 on this sixth day of February 2024. In accordance with the schedule of school board meetings approved by the School Board at their January 9th, 2024 organizational regular meeting and pursuant to Bylaw 1-46 and Virginia Code Section 2.2-3707, the School Board will hold a special meeting on Tuesday, February 6, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. at the School Administration Building Number 6, 2512 George Mason Drive, Virginia Beach, Virginia, 23456, in the School Board Room. The purpose of this special meeting is for the presentation of the Superintendent's Estimate of Needs for Fiscal Year 2425 and the Proposed Capital Improvement Program Fiscal Year 2425 through Fiscal Year 2930. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on schoolboard.bbschools.com/meetings/live, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47 and on Zoom. Thank you to those who have joined us in person and online. At this time, I will ask Madam Clerk to tally the roll call.
Okay, Madam Chair, we have ten School Board members present. We have Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Manning, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
Thank you. All right, adoption of the agenda. Please note, the section of "Adoption of the Agenda" was not listed on the published agenda for this special meeting, so I'm making the modification to the agenda to include the adoption of the agenda. Are there any other modifications to the agenda as presented? All right, hearing none, I call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented and modified. Motion by Ms. Brown, second by Ms. Manning. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the voting, I call for a vote to approve the agenda. The voting board is open.
Madam Chair, we have ten ayes, so the motion did pass.
Thank you. Okay, so budget presentation. Welcome, Dr. Robertson, Superintendent, Crystal Pate, Chief Financial Officer, and Melissa Ingram, Executive Director of Facility Services. We will begin with the Superintendent's Estimate of Needs for Fiscal Year 2425.
So, good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chairwoman Franklin, School Members, and Dr. Robertson. In your board documents, each of you should have received a copy of Fiscal Year 2425 Superintendent Estimate of Needs, as well as a copy of Fiscal Year 2425 through Fiscal Year 2930 Capital Improvement Program document. For your information, these documents should, are scheduled to be posted on our website tomorrow. The agenda for this presentation is shown on this slide. Dr. Robertson will present a prelude to the CION presentation, then I will review the responses to School Board Members' questions from the January 23 meeting, update you on administrative actions since January 23. I will then provide some additional information regarding the Superintendent's Estimate of Needs, including general information on the impact of the scenarios of reducing the real estate tax rate from one cent to seven cent. I will then turn the presentation over to Ms. Melissa Ingram to cover the Capital Improvement Program. I will now turn the presentation over to Dr. Robertson.
So, thank you, Ms. Pate, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, and School Board Members. The Superintendent's Estimate of Needs or the CION is often considered the unofficial kickoff to the Board's budget development process, acknowledging months of discussions and presentations that we would, we have had throughout the year about our collective priorities of School Division. However, as I present you this document, the financial outlook appears very different from where we were a year ago at this time, so we'll read a little differently than previous CIONs. Over the past year, our national, state, and local economies have barely avoided a recession. In March 2022, the Federal Reserve began raising the benchmark rate to address rising inflation at the fastest pace in four decades. This rate currently, the range is from 5.25% to 5.5%, a 22-year high. As a result, borrowing costs have increased, which impacts long-term financial planning. The current inflation rate stands at 3.4% for the past 12-month period, an increase of .3 tenths of a percent from the previous month's report. Additionally, inflation has been and is projected to be considerably higher in specific areas like school construction. As we all know, inflation impacts the costs of goods and services and must be a consideration when looking at employee compensation. For the School Board and for this administration, teacher compensation remains a top priority for Fiscal Year 2425. At the federal level, Virginia Beach City Public Schools benefited over the past three years from approximately $129 million in federal relief funds that are set to expire in September 2024. Other issues impacting the economic outlook at the federal level are the war in Ukraine and Israeli-Palestinian conflict. At the state level, significant changes to curriculum, assessment, and accountability are not fully funded. And at the local level, rising real estate assessments, flooding, and economic growth are among numerous challenges the city faces. This CION contains federal revenues of $14.7 million, an increase of $1.2 million from last year, state revenues of $455.9 million, an increase of $545,000 from last year. Revenue-sharing formula, revenues of $479.4 million, an increase of $18.5 million from last year, other local revenues of $4.5 million, an increase of $489,000 from last year, and a school reserve of zero, a decrease of $300,000, for a total budget of $954,507,262. The result is an increase of $20.4 million from last fiscal year. While our $954.5 million operating budget encompasses the wide range of requirements to run our school system every day, we have always made sure to not only provide the essentials to our students and staff, but also the resources and compensation they and our community expect. In this CION, we have prioritized our resources to cover increasing costs based on inflation, ensure staff are well-positioned to support student needs, and provide the best possible compensation package to recognize the outstanding efforts of our staff. For the School Board and for this administration, teacher compensation remains a top priority for Fiscal Year 2425. And earlier I shared, the current inflation rate stands at 3.4%. If we factored an inflation rate of 3.4% into our base budget from last year, we would require a budget of $965,841,919 just to have a dollar-for-dollar break-even amount in the coming budget. As you can see, we would need another $11.4 million in our overall budget revenues to match the increased inflation costs this year. As always, Virginia Beach City Public Schools recognizes the need for ongoing capital improvements across the division. Another part of our commitment to ensure that every student and every staff member works and learns in an environment designed and maintained for excellence, and to that end, the Proposed Capital Improvement Program includes funding to support the health, safety, maintenance, and replacement of our School Division facilities and sites. Due to funding constraints over the last several decades, a large number of projects, system replacements, and building replacements have been deferred. Recent economic conditions have caused higher levels of inflation and have negatively contributed to the issue of the current and historical level CIP funding that does not adequately support the maintenance of roughly 11 million square feet and 1,900 acres of space. The Fiscal Year 25 through Fiscal Year 30 Proposed CIP prioritizes maintenance projects. Funding related to the categories of HVAC and re-roofing have been increased in order to meet deferred needs in those areas. While total CIP funding remains flat through the six-year program, appropriations for all CIP maintenance projects have been adjusted for inflation annually throughout the six-year program. Additional funding and an increase in debt services will be needed to support the modernization program. The Fiscal Year 25 through Fiscal Year 30 Proposed CIP is intended to help Virginia Beach City Public Schools keep up with the needs of its aging existing buildings and systems. Despite these challenges, we remain confident in building a final budget which will continue to provide our students and staff with the remarkable amount of support we have and will continue to do during, whether it was an extraordinary time financially or otherwise. This is thanks to our Chief Financial Officer, to our award-winning budgets and finance staff, and to you, our School Board. I am grateful to work for a School Division where we put students and staff first, no matter the situation. Thanks to this unwavering commitment to encompass 2025, your guidance, our resilient, dedicated staff, and a patient, supportive community, we have made some amazing things happen. Here are some of the many accomplishments from a remarkable year aligned to our strategic framework. Under Goal One, Educational Excellence, Virginia Beach City Public Schools has continued to lead the region in a prestigious group of comparable, high-performing divisions in student performance on the state standard of learning tests. We are one of a handful of School Divisions across Commonwealth that composed all schools have been accredited for the three years prior to that pandemic waiver period and the two years following the waiver period. Virginia Beach City Public Schools is the largest of those School Divisions on that very small list. Six of our schools earned the highest achievement award from the Virginia Board of Education for their most recent award year: North Lanning Elementary, Old Donation School, Princess Anne Elementary, Strawberry Ridge Elementary, Three Oaks Elementary, and Towood Elementary. To reach this designation, schools must be accredited and meet state benchmarks in reading, math, and science. Two of our high schools were recognized with Continuous Improvement Awards for increasing their graduation and completion index: Bayside and Green Run. Two of our elementary schools were recognized with Continuous Improvement Awards for increasing achievement in mathematics and reading: Parkway and White Oaks. And finally, Kempsville High School received the Innovative Practices Award for creating a cohesive, multi-pronged, school-wide plan to align student experiences with our graduate profile. For the 14th consecutive year, VBCPS reached a record on-time graduation rate, which now stands at 95.3%. In addition, the division's dropout rate remained at 2.8%, outperforming Virginia rates of 91.9% for on-time graduation and 5.4% for dropouts. For the 14th consecutive year, we have been named one of the Best Communities for Music Education by the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation for Outstanding Commitment to Music Education. U.S. News and World Report ranked Kingston Elementary and Old Donation School as the number-one elementary and middle schools in Virginia. Old Donation School was also ranked as the number-two elementary school in the state. The magazine analyzed more than 100,000 schools nationally, including 1,754 elementary and 1,005 middle schools in Virginia. Virginia Beach was also the only School Division of Hampton Roads to rank in the magazine's Top 10 for elementary schools in Virginia, and several of our middle and high schools ranked in the Top 50. Great Neck and Salem Middle Schools once again received distinction as avid national demonstrations schools. This elite designation has been awarded to only 200 of 8,000 avid schools in the United States and around the world. Avid National Demonstration Schools exhibit a college and career readiness culture through rigor and high expectations for all students throughout the school. Bayside Sixth Grade Campus Principal Champris Bevel was selected as the 2023 Virginia Middle School Principal of the Year and was one of three finalists for the National Middle School Principal of the Year. Bayside Sixth Grade Campus was also named a 2022-2023 National ESEA Distinguished School. Two schools from every state received the award, which was presented by the National Association of ESEA State Program Administrators. Bayside Sixth was acknowledged for demonstrating exceptional student performance for two consecutive years. Under Goal Two of our strategic framework, Student Well-Being, based on results from our annual spring survey, more than 85% of students, parents, and staff report our schools and departments are safe and welcoming. Virginia Beach City Public Schools is one of a select number of School Divisions being awarded the School-Based Mental Health Services Grant from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services for the 2324 school year. This highly competitive grant provides Virginia Beach City Public Schools $393,000 to support our students, staff, and families by strengthening school-based mental health services and resources within the multi-tiered Systems of Support Framework. Virginia Beach currently has 82 schools and centers that have earned the VDOE Purple Star designation. The most recent schools to earn this distinction are Cox High School, Indian Lakes Elementary, John Bedai Elementary, and Birdneck Elementary, which earned the designation for the second time. The Purple Star designation is awarded to military-friendly schools that have demonstrated their commitment to meeting the needs of military families, and there are over 11,500 military-connected students in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Supported by our Office for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, the TIDE Coalition is a network of staff and students working with community partners to address equity, social-emotional learning, mental health, and civic engagement. Our first-ever TIDE Coalition Conference was held in October, and the group continues to meet regularly to make a positive impact in our schools and in our community. DEI is also revitalizing a division-wide mentoring program that paused during the pandemic. This program, called Making Ways, provides a framework for staff to mentor students in grades three through eight. Under Goal Three, Student Ownership of Learning, since the Industry Credential Program began in 2002, over 155,000 industry credentials have been earned by Virginia Beach City Public Schools students. Each year, students have access to over 125 different credentials that link to career fields. Last year, students earned a record 13,520 globally-recognized industry credentials as a validation of their career readiness. More than 1,000 high school students participated in work-based and service learning in 2223, involving more than 150 partner organizations, yielding an estimated economic impact of over $430,000 in wage-hour equivalency. Virginia Beach City Public Schools and Achievable Dream Academy expanded their partnership with the opening of a new addition at Lynn Haven Middle School in August 2023. The 25,000-square-foot addition is home to the new Lynn Haven Achievable Dream High School program. Virginia Beach City Public Schools opened a Renewable Energy Program for students at the Advanced Technology Center this past fall. A specially-equipped classroom helps students explore emerging technologies in solar, offshore wind, and electric vehicles. The Classroom Project is supported by the Virginia Beach Education Foundation and the Accelerating Change Together, or ACT, grant partners. Eight of the 11 comprehensive high schools earned the National Gold Council of Excellence Award from the National Association of Student Councils in 2023, with a ninth school earning the National Council of Excellence Award. This award recognizes student councils for their records of leadership, service, and activities that improve the school and community. VBCPS represents almost 70% of the Virginia schools on this list of awardees. Under Goal Four, Exemplary Diversified Staff, based on the results from our annual spring survey, more than 85% of staff reported high levels of job satisfaction, and our teacher retention rate for 2223 to 2324 was 90%. In 202223, Virginia Beach City Public Schools implemented the largest employee compensation package thanks to this board and reduced healthcare premiums by 40% to 50%. Under Goal Five of Mutually Beneficial Partnerships, more than 85% of participating families expressed satisfaction with division events, programs, and resources. And Virginia Beach City Public Schools recently collaborated with Newper News Shipbuilding to create the Apprentice X Program, just one of the 1,145 partnerships in place to support students' well-being, learning, and clear career exploration in the real world. And finally, under Goal Six, Organizational Effectiveness and Efficiency, Virginia Beach City Public Schools established the Virginia Beach School Safety Task Force and expanded the School Resource Officer Program. The Office of Security Emergency Management acquired over $1.3 million through grant acquisition, improving the overall safety and security posture of the entire division. OSUM hired and trained 10 armed security officers, bringing the total of armed security officers working in our secondary schools to 22. We are constantly recognized, or I'm sorry, we are consistently recognized for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association and the Association of School Business Officials International. I am confident the outcomes we have collectively achieved, School Board, leadership, teachers, and all support staff, will continue in the 2425 school year, given the resources needed to position Virginia Beach City Public Schools as the premier school division in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson.
So, these next six slides address School Board Members' questions from January 23 and the responses. I hope you have had an opportunity to review. I will flip through each slide and give you a few moments to look over. On this slide, I will take you through administrative actions to balance the CION based on the deficit you were briefed on in our last School Board workshop. As you may recall, we were at a deficit of $3,62,366. Through the diligent work of senior staff, under Dr. Robertson's leadership and guidance, the following additional reductions were made to balance the CION. We are removing four PBIS coaches at a cost of $395,629. We retained the PBIS specialist, whose role will be redefined to support elementary and middle schools. We moved the remaining $1 million related to our secondary tutoring contract to the All In Virginia Grant. We moved the $199,320 contract for communities and schools to the All In Virginia Grant as well. After a discussion with the Department of School Leadership, we have reduced each school's budget by 5% at a cost of $296,877. Through conversations with Panorama and Qualtrics representatives, we were able to reduce the costs for both programs for a small trade-off in functionality. Panorama is now $38,000 less, and Qualtrics is $68,873 less. Both platforms provide valuable resources and tools for supporting the division's strategic priorities. And finally, we reduced the budget $1,63,667 for site-assigned subs. Recall, in the past few years, we used a combination of ESAR and operating funds to increase the number of site-assigned subs due to the large number of unfilled substitute positions in many schools. The sub-fill rate continues to get better, and we feel this adjustment will not have a negative effect on schools. The next part of the presentation this evening is focused specifically on the school operating budget. However, the Estimate of Needs document provides a great deal of information on the budget development process, details on the School Board's funds, of budgetary priorities, challenges, and highlights, information on special revenue funds, historical enrollment, and budgeted expenditures per pupil. There is also a section on personnel resources allocations and staffing standards and guidelines. This, this information may be helpful to you over the next month as we move through the budget development timeline and to arrive at an approved budget for Fiscal Year 2425. This estimate of needs is based on the Governor's proposed state budget, which is not adopted. We do expect to see changes to this proposed state budget when the General Assembly adjourns in March. If the General Assembly passes some of the J-Lark recommendations, it could provide additional funding. Any state changes will be brought forward to the School Board for discussion and consideration. So, let me begin with sharing information on the Proposed School Operating Fund and various breakdowns based on where we are to date. This slide shows you our revenue sources and related percentages that comprise the School Operating Fund. As you can see, the local contribution from the city is the largest funding source at 49.8%. State funding, including state sales tax, makes up the second-largest source at 48.3%. The federal source comes in at 1.5%, and the other sources of revenue make up the remaining 0.4%. When we look at the School Operating Budget by major category classification, as you would expect, the instructional portion is the largest at 73%. Operation and maintenance is the second-largest portion at 12.1%. Pupil transportation is at 5.4%. Administration attendance and health are at 4.8%, and technology is coming in at 4.7%. As I make a point to note each year, these specific categories are prescribed by the state and listed in Virginia Code. Our chart of accounts is built upon, around these categories for budgeting and reporting purposes. This last chart shows school operating expenditures by type. As you know, we are a very labor-intensive business, and combining our personnel and fringe benefits costs equates to 85.6% of our school operating budget. The remaining other types is listed on this chart, total 14.4%. Most of this 14.4% is non-discretionary due to items such as ongoing contractual obligations, fuel, utilities, et cetera, which at the moment are heavily impacted by inflation. So, only a small portion of this 14.4% of our school operating budget allows any discretionary spending or flexibility. This means that any deeper reductions in revenue will impact personnel. On these next few slides, I'm going to go over our budget balancing efforts that are a result of much discussion with Dr. Robertson, senior leadership, and the budget development team. team. Due to the lower-than-expected state revenue coming out of the governor's budget, the division had to make adjustments to some resources and programs that were considered areas where we could make some trade-offs, but still believed we could meet the needs of our students. We also had to make some cuts that we thought the division could handle so that we could leverage the funding we do have so not to negatively impact the instruction of our students. The division also assessed staffing levels at the central office level and instituted a freeze on vacancies, coordinator and below, unless the position was deemed critical to the operations of the department. This is the first of four slides that cover our budget balancing efforts over the last several weeks. I'm not going to go over line by line, I'm just going to mention a few of the items on each page which are highlighted in yellow. Hopefully, you've had some time to review this list in its entirety. As we have previously shared, we are estimating additional revenue over the twenty-three, twenty-four amended adopted budget from all sources to be approximately twenty point four million dollars. Ninety percent of this additional revenue, or eighteen point four million, is expected from the revenue-sharing formula with the city. The state is estimated to increase by four point five million, and state sales tax is estimated to decrease by approximately three point nine million, resulting in an increase of just five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, or two point two percent over our amended adopted twenty-three, twenty-four budget. In the area of compensation, the CION includes the two percent raise that was effective January first, two thousand and twenty-four. So this is the two percent employees already received this fiscal year. We had to include it in the CION since the data used to build the CION was extracted prior to the January first date. For context, a one percent raise with benefits is over six point eight million dollars. Also included in the CION based on Siegel's calculations is a one point five percent step increase per the teacher pay scale with no change to the starting salary, and a one percent or one point five percent step increase per the unified pay scale with a change to minimum wage for our lowest-wage employees to fifteen dollars an hour. Recall that on the unified scale, certain years of service have a one percent between steps, and the other years of service have a one point five percent between steps. You can see we had to increase the transfer to Green Run Collegiate, and this is due to the compensation increase I just mentioned. And there's also an increase to the athletic fund transfer due to the increased costs related to officials, uniforms, equipment, et cetera. On this next slide, I want to point out the nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars for an increase in extended school-year personnel, or ESY. ESY is a service provided to students whose IEP teams have determined that they require such services. The population of students requiring ESY services has grown tremendously over the past several years, in part due to the pandemic and related learning loss. These are TEA positions, and this additional cost is the projection for pay and FICA for staff to serve the increased student population. We have included six hundred and ninety thousand dollars increase for the cost of our contract for CSEP tuition. We have included six hundred and sixty-eight thousand to cover the cost of the increase in our student transportation contract to private-day facilities as required, and there is six hundred thousand to cover the cost of taxicab transportation for our homeless student population, which again is required by law. On this next slide, I want to draw your eye to the last four items on the page. You've heard about the impact of inflation on operational items and the loss in the buying power of a dollar. We have increased the budget by over one point eight million dollars to cover expected increases in general maintenance, parts and supplies for maintenance, custodial supplies, and increased costs for grounds services provided by the city. And finally, on the last budget balancing slide, note the addition of the fifteen security assistants for elementary at a cost of six hundred and ninety-six thousand. We were hoping to add thirty, which would mean that every elementary school would have two security assistants, but funds at this time do not allow this. You see the cost savings measure of approximately six point five million for the increase in the staffing ratio for middle and high from twenty-one point two-five to one to twenty-one point seven-five to one. This is an increase of point five and should have a minor impact that can be mitigated through the master scheduling process at the school level. Also, as mentioned, we have identified over one point four million dollars in savings due to the hard work of our chief officers, who carefully reviewed their existing budgets and identified reductions that could be overcome by making adjustments to existing processes. A reduction in revenue, particularly due to our real estate tax rate reduction, can pose significant challenges to the school division's budget. As we face the need to make budget cuts because of a possible cut in the real estate tax rate at various levels, it is essential to approach the process strategically and consider the potential impacts on various aspects of the school division. As a reminder, a one-cent cut in the real estate tax rate is a three point seven million dollar revenue reduction to the school division. Just balancing the CION based on lower-than-expected state revenue resulted in cuts in resources and programs, along with a hiring freeze. Given our current revenue projections from the state, which was only the five hundred and forty-five thousand, a one-cent reduction in real estate tax revenues will significantly impact resources and programs. Resources include both fiscal and human, while programs include division and school specialty programming. As you move into cuts in the two to three cents range and up, then you start talking about cuts to more major resources, programs, and services that can cause disruption to students, staff, and families. Services include division and school-related services. At the highest level of reductions, you must begin to consider not only the cuts to major resources, programs, and services, but also we would need to consider the possibility of reducing staffing levels and other items deemed essential to running the school division. We will continue to reassess the budget during this budget development time and make adjustments to the school division's financial situation as it evolves. I will now turn the presentation over to Melissa to go over the capital improvement program.
Thank you, Ms. Pate. So good evening, Chair Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, Dr. Robertson, and members of the board. I am here today representing the Office of Facility Services to present the proposed fiscal year twenty-five Capital Improvement Program, or CIP. This is a portion of the superintendent estimates of me. I first want to begin today's discussion by outlining several assumptions that have been considered as we have drafted the proposed CIP. The first is level funding. As we have reported to the board in the past, we continue to have level funding for our capital needs despite inflation. We have experienced this level funding and at times a decrease in funding within the last two decades. This negatively impacts our ability to meet our needs that need to be considered within the six-year capital program. The second assumption is the impact of inflation, that we have experienced on an annual basis, losing buying power for over a decade, with inflation being more extreme in recent years and projected to continue while leveling off to a projected six point two percent rate as we look ahead. For our capital needs, this inflation can be related to supply chain, material costs, and labor shortages. Combined, these issues have very real impacts on contract costs related to our capital program. During the five-year forecast, we have talked with you about debt service or the ability to pay back our CIP. Over the last year, we have been taking a closer look at debt service as it relates to appropriations that go into our six-year program. We will continue to do so as the fifty-million-dollar limit to debt service has almost been reached in our current fiscal year twenty-four program. We look forward to reporting to you those findings as we continue through the CION process, working with the city and our financial consultant, Davenport. We hope to continue to gain some perspectives on financial strategies in order to make the most out of proposed appropriations and timing of expenditures that are put into our capital program. Next is an increased prioritization on maintenance of our existing buildings or renovation and replacement projects that are part of the CIP. While historically we have planned for fifty percent of the CIP to go into maintenance and fifty percent into new construction, this proposed CIP increases the dedication of appropriations to the maintenance of existing building systems' infrastructure that comprise our roughly eleven million square feet of space and nineteen hundred acres, in order to continue to provide safe and effective learning environments for our students and staff. And lastly, we value our new construction. However, the shift in prioritization, coupled with the flat funding and inflationary effects on our budgets, result in funding constraints that would only support smaller-scale projects. As we review the proposed project summary for fiscal year twenty-five CIP, you will see that prioritize is the smaller-scale new construction project of Williams Elementary School Bayside Sixth Grade Campus Replacement, rather than the larger-scale high school replacement projects due to these funding constraints that continue in this proposed fiscal year twenty-five CIP. This first table is showing our currently-approved funding sources for fiscal year twenty-four. These are the funding sources that we are currently using to implement our capital improvement program. You can see that our funding remains at roughly sixty-two million dollars a year, declining slightly throughout the six-year program to sixty-one point eight million dollars in year six. Highlighted in red across the current six-year program illustrates the strategy that is helping to mitigate our debt service limit constraints, the increase of use of cash in the form of pay-go or reversion funding to fund these large capital needs, resulting in reducing the reliance on debt in the form of charter bonds, public facility revenue bonds, and energy performance contract bonds. Our next slide looks very similar to the first, due to limited changes to funding sources for this proposed CIP fiscal year twenty-five. Looking at the last column proposed for fiscal year thirty, there is no change to the column or the three years before it, with almost all values remaining the same, with the exception of slight increases to pay-go, coupled with equal reduction in reversion funding. This is for better planning purposes over time. Year one reversion funding of eleven million dollars was approved by city council in November of two thousand and twenty-three. The new six-year proposed funding remains at sixty-one point eight million dollars. This continued level funding does not address the inflation that we have been experiencing and that we need to plan for for our future budgetary projections. Now moving on to the adopted funding summary by project, this table shows appropriations currently approved in the fiscal year twenty-four CIP. With this document in front of you, you can see highlighted in yellow across the current six years are new construction, school modernization replacement projects, Princess Anne High School, Williams Bayside Sixth Grade Campus, and Bayside High School Replacements. As we shared last year, our budgeting for total project cost for our school replacement projects need to consider the year that the projects are projected to be bid for construction. You can see in this current CIP, we were able to complete Lynnhaven Middle School Edition for an Achievable Dream Academy, a smaller-scale project of an addition attached to Lynnhaven Middle School. Also highlighted in yellow, in vertical columns in the middle of the table, are our maintenance CIP project categories of most need. CIP one dash zero one eight, one dash zero one nine, and one dash zero two zero. We have shared with you during the facilities update in November two thousand and twenty-three for these project categories of HVAC, re-roofing, and various, that these categories are funded only to the level of eighteen percent to sixty percent of their projected needs, causing a deferral of replacement of systems related to existing building envelopes, HVAC, and life-safety systems in our existing buildings. The bar graph on our next slide illustrates the proposed fiscal year twenty-five CIP. The darker blue bars represent total CIP funding, which you can see remain flat throughout the six-year program. In green, the maintenance-related appropriations are shown as a larger priority and increasing over time as they are adjusted for inflation. This results in our new construction in aqua-blue decreasing over time to only one point four million in year six. If we were continued to a year seven, which is outside of the six-year proposed plan, we would see a deficit in both categories within these level funding constraints. If you recall seeing the similar graph in November two thousand and twenty-three, during the facilities update presentation, funding was relatively even between the two categories and also remained flat. At roughly fifty percent each, maintenance and new construction, as the six-year program continued. In contrast, this proposed fiscal year twenty-five CIP dedicates six years of funding as eighty-four percent dedicated to maintenance and sixteen percent dedicated to new construction. Now turning to the currently-proposed fiscal year twenty-five funding summary by project category for this year's CION, advanced one year within the capital program to the proposed fiscal year twenty-five CIP as year one and fiscal year thirty as year six. There are several differences that I will point out to you. We'll start with the shift of prioritization of maintenance projects, highlighted vertically in yellow in the center of the table. Year one has been increased substantially for the three most important maintenance projects that we just reviewed in the adopted CIP. HVAC, re-roofing, and various. In order to work towards a ten-year recovery plan for our most critical maintenance needs related to our building envelopes, HVAC, and life-safety system needs. As you move across the six-year program in these categories and in additional maintenance-related categories such as grounds and safe schools, all system maintenance projects have been increased annually in order to keep up with inflationary constraints that we have been experiencing. Even with this shift, project categories like HVAC will not be fully recovered within this six-year program. Highlighted in yellow horizontally as we move through the six-year program are the new construction school replacement projects, with priority shifting to the smaller-scale project of Williams Elementary School Bayside Sixth Grade Campus Replacement, shown in the middle of the table, which would be achievable within the proposed six-year CIP with appropriations to date shifted from Princess Anne High School to Williams Bayside Sixth, in order to accomplish this project. Projected to be bid in two thousand and twenty-six and continuing design services this next fiscal year, year one of the proposed CIP, in preparation to bid in year two. Princess Anne High School replacement, shown at the top of the table, has shifted to a bid date of two thousand and forty-three, with its total project cost adjusted for inflation. Looking towards the bottom of the table, highlighted in yellow horizontally, you see Bayside High School has had appropriations to date not yet used, transferred out of Bayside High School project in order to accommodate maintenance needs not accounted for within the six-year capital program. Bayside High School total project cost has also been adjusted for inflation to its projected bid date of two thousand and fifty-six to be completed in two thousand and fifty-nine. Both of these larger-scale high school replacement projects would require funding that accounts for the levels of inflation in future years in order to be achieved, rather than the level funding we currently have in this proposed CIP. As a reminder, these new construction projects' costs are estimated based on the projected bid date in order to plan and provide information to the board for consideration. For example, Princess Anne's High School, having first been shown in the CIP in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, had a project estimate of a hundred and five million dollars at the time. If we were to bid Princess Anne High School project in two thousand and twenty-six under this proposed CIP, the total project cost would be estimated at two hundred and eighty-four million dollars. Also added to this CIP is an update to the Virginia Beach City Public Schools Comprehensive Long Range Facilities Master Plan, which is reaching the ten- Comprehensive Long Range Facilities Master Plan, which is reaching the ten-year update cycle. Staff proposes using this update to help analyze the constraints and shifts in priority that we have discussed as part of the proposed fiscal year twenty-five C I P, presented as part of the CION. So in terms of looking at our C I P School Modernization Replacement Program, the currently adopted fiscal year twenty-four C I P table is in front of you, showing our three new construction projects in the C I P as being roughly seventy-five years old when replaced, past their useful life expectancy for these buildings. Total funding for new construction shows seven hundred fourteen million dollars for these replacement projects. Future buildings in this program approach a hundred years of age very quickly with the average age of replacement at one hundred sixteen years of age. This is due to the compounding effect of inflation at pro- as projects get deferred and increase in cost. Looking at the currently proposed C I P School Modernization Replacement Program proposed for fiscal year twenty-five, the shift of appropriations to maintenance projects prioritization allows the smaller-scale project of Williams Elementary School Bayside Sixth Grade Replacement to be bid in twenty twenty-six after completing design work this next year. An R F Q could be put out in the near future to complete the thirty percent designs created with the P P E A, projected to complete construction in twenty twenty-nine with demolition activities on both respective sites to be completed the following year in twenty thirty. The larger-scale projects would not be replaced for over twenty years later than originally planned, approaching one hundred years of age for Princess Anne High School in twenty forty-three and for Bayside High School in twenty fifty-six. The remaining projects also age as they get deferred for replacement to an average age of one hundred thirty-six years. With current and historical funding constraints, we have had to make these gross estimates on what is in the realm of mathematical possibilities considering both appropriations, level funding we've discussed, and debt service, fifty million dollar limit on payback. With an uncertainty of timing and level for funding changes needed, we have had to plan with these estimates in front of you with estimated dates for bidding of projects and related project costs. These projections for proposed fiscal year twenty-five School Modernization Replacement Program can be looked at more closely as part of the long-range facility master plan update included in the proposed C I P, along with our maintenance system needs. As also mentioned in the beginning of the brief, we will con- we will come back to you during this budget season with a look at the shift of prioritization impact on debt service. As summer maintenance projects have different considerations for cash flow needs that could impact the debt service. We look forward to coming back to the board with this continued work that we are conducting with our consulting, with our consultant, Davenport, and our city staff colleagues in future presentation. And I will now turn it back over to Ms. Pate.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. So what's next? We continue to share these same next steps with you to keep them in the forefront. During the month of February, we'll be holding budget workshops every Tuesday. There's a public hearing scheduled for February thirteenth. An alert now did go out this evening on that. February thirteenth is also the crossover day in the General Assembly. This is the day in the legislative session where bills must pass by in their respective chambers in order to be considered in the other chamber. After crossover, only the bills each chamber can consider must have already passed the other legislative chamber. So on the February twentieth workshop, we hope to share with you the additional information related to the outcome of the crossover. Also, City Council is scheduled to have a retreat on February thirteenth and fourteenth, and we will provide any updates we receive out of their retreat. We expect the board to approve the proposed budget on March fifth. Within a week of board approval, budget documents will be sent, sent over to the city. Tentatively, we were scheduled to present the budget to City Council in April. However, very recently, the city requested that we present to City Council on March twenty-sixth, and then we expect City Council to approve the division's budget along with theirs by May fifteenth. Again, we have provided you a lot of information this evening to take in and think about. If you have any questions while you are reviewing the document, please do not hesitate to reach out to us. Please email questions to Dr. Robertson, myself, and all school board members. And please submit questions by Friday each week so we can provide answers before the following Tuesday. We thank you for the time this evening, and this concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Pate, Dr. Robertson, Ms. Ingram, thank you for this. And with that, the, we are adjourned, uh, five fifty-four. So.